Directors.
Well, I think as I've been talking to Sheriff Enright and watching the blotter, I think they've been doing just that. They will respond to a call or a report. They will respond and inform. And I really think that's our best mode of community involvement at the moment.
Everybody just should be responsible adults.
And most of them have, by and large.
On your paper there, of course, we haven't seen it. He opened houses to worship last week. Drive up? Did he clarify that on this, on your paper there? I believe so. What did he say about tridents of worship?
Still drive up.
Still drive up?
Still ten people, still less than ten, or drive up, or virtual meetings.
And I understand, look, I'm gonna go on a little limb here, okay? I understand that certain members of our community are frustrated when they see other people exercising their religious constitutional rights to worship as they see fit. And they, a lot of questions on it. Some people want us to go and shut them down. Others wanna sue us under oppression of color of law, right? So we're stuck in this spot and frankly, the longer these directives go on, the more uncomfortable I feel about enforcing these directives against the institution of religion and/or the right to peacefully assemble. Those are pretty fundamental rights. And the longer, the longer this emergency wanes and kinda sets off towards May thirtieth, the less it feels like an actual emergency to justify those directives. And so while part of the community is pretty frustrated that we're not dragging parishioners out of a church in cuffs, you know? It's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it.
Nobody wants that.
No. So we're just asking for, we're asking for compliance, that's all.
Does anyone on the phone have any comments, any commissioner or county or city councilman, on what we're talking about here right now? I think it was pretty straightforward and you listened to the governor and his directives, but if there's other questions like we've asked here at this roundtable that a commissioner or a council would like to speak to, please do.
Shane, I was contacted after the governor spoke about, by a couple of business owners, that were not aware of what their occupancy number was and wondered where they could get that information. And is that something we can publish for our business community to make it easier for us?
It's building dependent.
It is building dependent, and that is something that they should have displayed. If they don't, I'm sure they're out of compliance with our building codes.
So, a long time ago, I operated a small business downtown, and I had the full inspection by the fire marshal at the time, and was granted the city license. At no time did they tell me what my occupancy was in that building.
It might have a difference for office versus retail.
Exactly. So I think we can get back to your building inspector and maybe just put some resources into visiting our, most of our businesses as best we can to make sure it's posted conspicuously, because that's how the sheriffs are gonna be able to inform, and the public's gonna know.
Well, and that would probably be, Shane, if you have people contacting you, business owners with that question, I think their first stop should be the building department.
I think we should, tomorrow is Friday, if we could get the building inspector to not that far to the region. Just to drive to some of the businesses, the larger ones, and let them know what their, if they don't know what their occupancy is. And because it is Friday and this edict is gonna go into effect at midnight, so.
Midnight Saturday?
I think twelve oh one.
No, it's Friday night.
Friday, twelve oh one. Saturday morning. One minute after twelve on Saturday it goes into effect. So businesses are gonna be open Saturday morning.
The library's never applied for a business license, so.
No, but I thought I saw an occupancy plaque at one point. They'll still put it in non-business locations as well for occupancy.
We'll have a check on that. But yeah, I agree. I think that's a, we'll do our best to keep the, and Sheriff Enright has been indispensable in that, keeping our businesses informed there as their deputies go around. But we will certainly look at that with your building inspector.
Good question, Shane. Anybody else out there got anything they'd like to speak to? Please, please speak up.
Um, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Put me on the top of it.
The grocery store and.
Who's speaking? Who's speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Michelle Beecher.
Okay.
Um, the grocery store and other establishments that have been open so far, they have not been subject to this half occupancy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But they are now subject to that, right?
Yes.
Okay. It'll be up to them to do whatever headcount or whatever they need to do during their busy times to make sure that they're not, they're not out of compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
Anecdotally, I would believe that this rule of occupancy really is not gonna affect our community all that much. We don't have those population densities.
Grocery store has an occupancy of like four hundred and seventy, and we never have two hundred.
Exactly. I'm just thinking about one particular business down the street down here that's pretty busy on Saturdays.
Sure.
And some days that I don't know what their occupancy is, so.
Anyone else?
Who? This is Mr. Sheriff Ian Bullis here.
Okay.
So, as we move forward together as a state and a county, I just want us to be mindful, the district attorney has kind of alluded to this and said it right out. We're really walking a fine line here where statistically speaking, it's clear this is no longer a danger to society. Like it mathematically doesn't add up anymore. It hasn't for a while. So now what we're a little concerned about is really just making sure that we don't catch a bunch of fly from Carson City if we choose to be more open than they would like. There are currently some lawsuits in place that are gonna be going against the state. And just, you guys already know how I feel. I feel like so many constitutional rights have been stomped on. None of these businesses should have had to close in the first place. There's only hard permission to run. People are upset. Nobody wants to stay closed. And the reality is, as we're starting to see across the nation, we can say whatever we want as politicians. We can put on our directives. We can issue executive orders. But for better or for worse, America is made up of people who don't mind sticking their middle finger in the air politicians and doing what they want. And people are gonna be opening up. They're sick of it. People in this community are absolutely sick of it. That's all what I hear from people. They were mad at us for even tabling the fact we didn't open the parks. And so I just want us to be mindful. I realize we don't want to catch it, you know, create any undue attention. But the reality is, it's seeming more and more like we're gonna be on the winning side, even if they do start to come after us. The federal government is on our side, and there are some lawsuits that look like they're gonna hold up in terms of some major overreach of shutting things down.
Is that it? Thank you, Ian. Anyone else out there on the phones? Anyone? Commissioner, councilman? Hearing that, we're looking for an action to discuss the draft.
Do you still have Dr. Biam on the phone?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Dr. Biam, you're on there?
Yep, I'm here.
Why don't you kinda give us what the public health comments on this soft opening by the governor is? And what you feel if we should stay, how we should, how we should move forward on a medically path? Would you help us there?
I have a really nice picture I'd like to share with everybody that would pretty much summarize what we're trying to do. The general principle, what we're trying to do, just, is there a way I can share the slide, share a picture?
Mike's working on it. Is there a way he can do that, Mike?
Go ahead and try now.
Mike, open up PowerPoint and just go to the last page. On the PowerPoint itself, just the last slide, that's all I needed.
Have you guys had access or seen Dr. Biam's PowerPoint?
Okay, that's it. So the general principle we're trying to do here is right, with the, since we know that we have two branches of advisory group that advise the governor, the LEAP and the MAP. And what they're trying to make sure is that we have all the infrastructure, all the mechanisms in place so we can actually self-sustain as a county against the fight against COVID. In other words, they were, as you know by the survey that we submitted to LEAP not too long ago, they wanna be sure that we have ample, we are able to do a prevention mechanism. Right now, the only thing that we have in existence that can prevent is social distancing. Vaccine will come in later, hopefully sooner than later. But the only thing that we have right now is social distancing, which is why it's here to stay for the next couple of phases. They wanna make sure that we have ample testing. We have enough contact tracers. We're able to track the disease trend, where have the capacity to quarantine people. And we have the ability to treat. In other words, what's the healthcare infrastructure to have equipment? And the medications that are still in development and research. So if any of these chain is broken, COVID can escape and pretty much reach everyone, everyone else. Our governors, commerce, travel, community, all the good things. So right now at phase one, we have some mechanism in place, with some, a wall, but a thin wall that in place. Then in future phases, we're trying to strengthen those walls. And that's essentially what we're trying to do. And that's what the governor wants to see, that happen in each other community so we can be safe.
Oh, we lost him. We lost him.
Oops.
Can you hear us, Dr. Biam? We can't hear you.
All right, let's move on.
Let's move on?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on because I think we've lost communication here. Is there anyone else out there, Shane, or any councilman out there before we just try to kinda wrap this up? I think we've touched on everything and everybody has a good idea of what's going on. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, please do.
I really think our community has done a fantastic job, and the data does bear out that we have done a good job here in keeping people safe. And despite what my personal feelings or anybody else's personal feelings about whether these actions are constitutional or the shutdown was necessary or anything like that, we have a responsibility not to put our business community at odds with their licensing boards as well as the state. They're all regulated by a number of people in addition to the city. And I don't think we do them any favors by causing them problems inadvertently by, you know, acting upon solely our own points of view. I think that's, I think, I appreciate the governor loosening things up and taking a liberal approach here. And I'm all for opening things up as quickly and as safely as we possibly can. And we'll be looking forward, working with Dr. Biam at tailoring these directives to our community and making sure we can get as many people back in business as we can and as soon as possible. I appreciate the county's support in that.
That's definitely the goal.
Yes?
Mayor, I presume, is that fair?
Yes.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
Okay, a couple things. I think Michelle asked a very fine question because I don't see where grocery stores are limited to fifty percent. And you're in the same, I think that's probably something you need to look at because I don't think they are.
Did you say?
They do a deep pull-up.
First on the target, just the amount of people that are really upset in the community.
And, you know, I see it all the time on the board, and we're willing to be faced with a lot of BS if we don't get these guys up and going. I totally agree with Ian, and I think grocery stores are not limited to fifty percent. That's all I have.
Go ahead, Mike.
Ed, we're gonna have to wait and see what his directive specifically states when it's released tonight or tomorrow. He did make a reference in his public address that it's not all good news because certain businesses that did have people in their stores already, i.e. essential businesses like grocery stores, would be reduced to occupancy. He didn't specifically say grocery stores, but he talked about those businesses that are already open. And we know that those businesses that are already open with people in their stores, for the most part, are essential businesses. So we're just doing some deductive reasoning here that they're gonna be looped in with that. I hope not. And so we'll see when he issues his more specific directive tonight, and we can, the mayor and I can address that tomorrow and try to disseminate that information. The other thing on that, Ed, is really frustrating for business owners. You may have caught that the governor is now making a law and directive that business owners and their employees must wear face coverings to run, in their businesses. And then he encourages the rest of us to wear, but he's not making a directive. So that's another frustrating aspect of these open businesses. And so we'll look for that direction specifically, and then we can get back to you on that one tomorrow.
I think he was, had mentioned in the, in his press release that he talked about the big box stores. It would be business different. I think he used that as an example when he was talking about the fifty percent occupancy.
And again, I'm not sure if it, when you actually look at those occupancy levels for Andersons and Ridley's, Matt Lumber, the South Fork Hardware, I'm not sure. It may not be an issue. We'll have to find out.
And I, yeah, we'll look into that. I think some of our smaller businesses, for example, my laundry mat has an occupancy of twenty-two, and we've been limiting people to ten anyway. But that's something we have run into. But as a smaller store, I can see that being more of a thing than at Ridley's or Matt Lumber, but we'll look into it.
Another thing maybe we wanna look into too is, not to throw caution into the wind, but I do know, I believe, Elko City, not county, just the city itself, some of the business owners up there did get a business plan on how they wanted to run business from here on out and submitted it, I believe, to the governor. And some of these businesses that are shut down here are open up there because they presented it. It seemed like the governor's trying to work with them and try it and see how it goes. So maybe that might be something to look into if we still don't have very many cases around here like it is now in a couple weeks, and the governor still might be not loosening up a little bit. If our business owners come up with their own plan, maybe we can submit it to the state or they can and try to open up some more businesses too.
And they're also doing, giving them the green stickers to put on their windows, their storefronts.
The county and city are pretty much, when we're looking at, that was what that survey was about. We pretty much meet the federal guidelines already, but I'd be curious, I'd like to know more about what our business owners, what some of the challenges are, even with these new, you know, opening up these directives. What are the remaining challenges that businesses are facing that they wanna open up more? And kinda see what those complaints are. And I'd also like to know more about what's happening in Elko to see, because.
As I just started talking from the city manager yesterday, that the city, the county of Elko had sent complaints to the governor. Because few people listen into the county meetings, it was, there were some rumors that went around. And then the city was trying to react. Some of the city businesses had opened, not fully understanding what the county had done and not understanding what the governor's or the state's mandates though were. And I think there was some confusion up there, at least from the city's, the city of Elko's governance standpoint. But I agree with Mike, working with our community businesses to see, you know, what hurdles they still have to cross and then making sure we're getting those, collecting those and getting those to the state and working with the state to keep lobbying them to keep opening. I think that's the best route. And demonstrating like we have, and I think I agree with Mike as well, that we've reached this point, and in no small part because of the efforts of our community to reach out to the state government and say, "Look, we're meeting these guidelines. We're making plans here. We have testing in place. We have contact tracing in place. We have contingency plans." I think demonstrating that has been a long way to helping our community get to where we are currently.
Yeah. So the public knows, the mayor, Dr. Biam, myself, I mean, other, some other people have put together, and the mayor sent the plan to the lieutenant governor, for what our community would look like if he allowed us to do a soft opening. And it's almost word for word what he gave us today. We probably would've gone a little bit farther, maybe with our gym or something. But it's pretty close. So I don't wanna say I'm happy about it, but it could've been a lot worse today, so.
I think on this item, what we wanna take a look at with the council and the commission, is everybody in agreement with what the soft open the governor gave us today? That we can continue on this path and hear what he has to say up to May the thirtieth? Or is there another thing that we want to push forward to maybe have different openings? Are we happy with what's taken place? I believe the governor did a good job of getting us a soft opening with the help of it. But are the, so either city council or White Mountain County Commission content with the way things are, status quo, listening to his directive, and if everything goes right, I think we'll see a phase two on May thirtieth. But unless somebody on either board would like to interject something other than what we heard today? I think he's issued us, go ahead, who's that?
This is Ian Bullis. I'm just voicing that I'm not content. We should be fully open right now, a hundred percent. But we gotta do what we gotta do.
I understand. I'm just trying to get this meeting around, and we've listened to the governor with the soft opening. I don't think anybody is fully content, and no one will be content until we're back to normal, a hundred percent. And all of us are back to living our lives the way we had it three months ago. No one's gonna be happy, including myself and everybody in this room and all, everybody in this community. But we've been, we've listened to the governor. He's given us a soft opening, which is kind of goes along with the Western Alliance. And actually, most openings across the states, you can't open everything up at one time. It's just too dangerous right now. There's just too much out there. But we've, and I feel, and I understand what you're saying. But what we're trying to get through with this particular meeting with the two boards is, should we, is there something else we'd like to put in here, or can we just kinda make an agreement to go along with the governor and his soft opening that he's given to us today affecting next, tomorrow night at twelve oh one midnight? Is there anybody else that has something they'd like to put into that? Or I'll ask the county commission for a vote in a minute. But I just really would like to hear somebody else has a comment before we go ahead and ask for, because this was an action item. Is there anybody?
I think that one of the things that we need to look at, I think at the very least we should do, you know, follow what the governor has said for right now. I would like to see us move forward, maybe in the next, where we talked about fifteen days or two weeks, or two weeks. I'd like to see fifteen days just because fourteen days, you know, after fourteen days, then you know. But where my concern has been is the ability for the, any retail or, you know, establishments or whatever, have they got what they need? Whether it's disinfectants, whether, because that's gonna be key. I think that, not so much for our community as a whole, but we are a tourist community. It's playing, you know, being safe with everybody that comes through here. So far as wiping down the door handles and, you know, that type of stuff, disinfectants.
Yeah, I think reaching out to them, like there's been a lot of talk of, I think people will patronize businesses that feel safe about.
Exactly. Some of them, that's exactly it.
And another thing he issued today, if you listened, was we still have the gaming control board out there that's gonna make a decision on ultimately the casinos that could probably maybe happen even before the thirtieth. But the gaming control board controls all the casinos, which is where the revenue is, how the slot machines are played, and the ability to sit at a bar with a slot machine in front of you. So there's still that option that I think is probably out there in a short while, where the gaming control board's gonna come up with their own way to let the casinos open, basically on the same thing, social distancing, but try to get, I've seen some of the plans that the gaming board has as far as table games and whatnot. But we could see that before the thirtieth of May also. So along with what we've got today from the governor and what is out there for our biggest revenue maker, which is the gaming, these two boards, either the commission and the city council, the directive or the action item on here is to, to discuss and draft, I think accept the draft that the governor gave us. You think we got a problem with that?
I think we'd be okay with a motion to that effect and continue to have input from Dr. Biam and his directives. I think he's been, he's been very professional and helpful to our community, and we do appreciate the county making such a wise decision and point. I think he's been great, so.
I know we feel like, I feel like we have more of an ability to do than what the governor has said. But I think at this time, it's important to just start out with this, with his.
Well, I fully intend, I think the city fully intends to continue to lobby the state and keep them informed of what our abilities are here locally and work with the hospital and lobby for further local control and being able to open up as we can. But for the meantime, I think you're right, following the state directives and adjustments as Dr. Biam sees fit, I think are the wise thing to do.
So just looking at the agenda, the way it's worded today for public notice purposes, it says that the draft of logistics and concepts of a cohesive plan to reopen businesses contingent on him, governor's life granting our region authority to do so. He's already, he's already just jumped over that and opened it himself. So we really don't have a motion to put together, we really don't have a motion to necessarily put together a plan. The only motion that, if we wanna discuss restricting pursuant to Dr. Biam, if you wanted to restrict anything that he's opened up that we're not comfortable with, that'd be about the only legal action we can take tonight. I'm not really hearing any of that, so we could probably just, if someone has a motion or something, otherwise just maybe keep it as discussion only, and we'll just kinda try to see what happens over the next week and meet again if we have to adjust something. That'd be my suggestion.
I think that would be better served in our own meetings. And so that being said, thanks for the guidance on that. And I think you're right, let's just leave it as a discussion item because he's already, like you said, left over. And then as we go to our respective boards, the city council and the county commission, we can discuss how we would like to do our own operations, because we are different entities. And that being said, is there anybody else, I'm going to kinda end the meeting at this point. And unless someone else has something to say, I'll open it up for public comment right now. And is there any public comment, you know, on the phone right now? Does anybody have any comment on what we've done here this evening?
Commissioner.
Yes, who's this?
Commissioner Jennifer Hollingsworth, I do.
It's who's this? Jen Hollingsworth. Jen Hollingsworth.
Jennifer Hollingsworth.
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer.
I think that as a county, a city, and county chief of both, we need to be aware that the PPE shortage that we're all seeing, whether it be for our nurses, our first responders, are now gonna be chipped off into our business owners. And I can tell you firsthand that trying to obtain even basic ear-lip mask is next to impossible. So I know that our county and city folks were vigilant about getting our nurse repaired and helping them every way that they could. I think that we need to use that same driving force to help these small businesses that are the hearts of our counties to be prepared with this PPE so that they can open up. And it is definitely gonna take all of us to help them with that.
Okay, Mike's gonna respond to that.
That's a very good concern. Thanks for bringing that up, Jen, because our emergency management committee meets on Monday afternoon at two. We can prioritize that and put all those resources that we have previously put to EMS, police, and the hospital on some of those business, on getting some stuff to the businesses and shift that focus. That's a really good suggestion. And we'll also invite some of the businesses to that meeting as well, so they can kinda give us an update on where their supplies are and what they need, so we can build those better communication routes. That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out there?
I can also comment on that particular concern.
Okay, Dr. Biam, go ahead.
Yes, for the vast majority of people in situations where there's a shortage of PPEs, the advisement is, when they say face masks, we're referring to for medical use. And which is why we're also using the term face coverings, which is for the most part homemade or not made for medical use. So in that situation, to use face coverings would meet the criteria for the governor, what the governor's trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else out there on the phone with some public comment right now before we adjourn?
Yes, this is Mary Kerners.
Yes, Mary.
I just wanted to thank the city council and the county commission for being diligent. District Attorney Lebo and Mayor Albersman for being on the radio, keeping people informed. For you guys always being willing to listen to our voice and make the tough decisions. So I just wanted to go on record and say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We're here for public comment, and anyone's voice is welcome. I'll ask one more time.
Yeah, Cody Kells.
Okay, Cody, please.
Yeah, I just wanna echo Commissioner Bullis and the concerns that he raised. I totally agree. I think that we need to move forward and go forward with opening things up. You know, a lot of the directives. You know, a lot of the directives and everything that's been pushed down on us, I think is, is really against the constitution. And I, I'd take, ask you to really look at that, and look what you sort of told, and I, uh, but, that said, I am very thankful for all the information that you're putting out there. Um, I think as a community, if you look at the statistics and we're asked, uh, we are able to go to what the president lists as phase three. And I would really hope that you consider to do that.